One, two. Testing, testing. One, two, three. Testing, one, two, three. Amy? Testing, testing. One, two, three. One, two, three, four. Nope.
Testing, one, two, three, testing. Hi, Arthur, testing English, testing English, testing English, okay. And testing English, okay, good. Testing, testing, testing. One, two, three, Arthur, can you hear me? Yeah? Okay, good.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to start the council meeting in just a moment. So if members of council could take their seat.
We'll be starting the meeting in one minute.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Ottawa City Council Meeting of the 13th of November. Before we begin prayer, I have a few comments to make. Last Friday, what is thought to be the strongest tropical cyclone ever recorded, Typhoon Hayan, swept across the Philippines. Winds reported up to 300 kilometers per hour smashed into the virtually defenseless Southeast Asian nation.
Winds of up to 300 kilometers an hour wiped out the Southeast Asian nation of the Philippines.
Tay and Cibou, which were in the direct path of Hayan, were torn apart by the horrendous winds and the following storm surge of ocean water. The city of Tacloban on the east end of Leite province was in the eye of this vicious storm. The city of 220,000 was literally flattened, and sadly, it's not the only one that we're going to hear about. Like you and people around the world, I have seen the images of all of this devastation in the days since the storm hit. There are no true estimates yet of the human and physical cost of this terrible storm and what it's inflicted, but we know that it will be in the thousands. But we know the citizens of the world must pull together to help those desperately now in need. Our large Filipino-Canadian community here in Ottawa, supported by all of their fellow residents, is mobilizing, as we have seen with the immediate efforts of the Church of the Assumption in Vanyé, led by Reverend Pedro Arana. The Canadian government is providing funding and resources and will match donations made by individual Canadians in the coming month.
The Government of Canada will double or match funds that are given by Canadians.
Encouraging all of us here in Ottawa to open our hearts and our wallets to assist. Aid agencies are telling us that cash is the most precious gift that can be provided at this time. I've written to the ambassador of the Philippines to convey our sympathies on behalf of city council and all our citizens. Our city and our people will rise to the occasion of need as we always do in the days and weeks to come.
Our city and our population are very generous and compassionate.
To join me in sharing a moment of silent reflection following our prayer in memory of all those families and individuals who have perished in this devastation and with the tragic loss of life and literally the tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands, who now find themselves homeless. So we'll have prayer followed by a moment of silence. Please rise. Almighty God, let us work together to serve all our people. Merci, thank you. You could please remain standing for the singing of our national anthem. And I'd ask our colleague councillor Shirelli to introduce the special guests who will sing our nation's anthem.
Thank you, your worship. Here today, we have Mr. Thomas's group from St. Paul's High School. It's a group featuring students who are involved in various musicals. We have here with us today Flounder from The Little Mermaid. So with that, I want to welcome Jessica Garang, Sandra Garang, Jamima Marquez, Nana Cassie, Eve Edwards, and Maggie Lushak.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all our sons command. God don't pass it, won't tell it, pay. He'll say, "Porter la paix." Tony's trial, they do, they prepare. They're blue, we all say, "Swoop." God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on God for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on God for thee.
Well, thank you very much to the students from St. Paul's. Merci beaucoup à les étudiants de St. Paul's.
Thanks to the students of St. Paul's.
Pleasure to ask Lieutenant Colonel Guy Robitaille to come forward along with his son Guy and city councillor Peter Hume, who is Lieutenant Colonel Robitaille's councillor. Merci. Bonjour. Councillor Hume is right behind us.
Lieutenant Colonel Robitaille is a Canadian hero who has called Ottawa home for decades after completing an amazing military career that saw him stationed all over North America and Europe during and after the Second World War. Lieutenant Colonel Robitaille est un héros canadien.
Lieutenant Colonel Robitaille is a Canadian hero who has called Ottawa home for decades after completing an amazing military career that saw him stationed all over North America and Europe during and after the Second World War.
In 1937, at just 16 years of age, and it's great to have some students here to hear this story, at just 16 years of age, Lieutenant Colonel Robitaille managed to join the Canadian forces, assuring them that he was the requisite 18 years of age. He worked his way up to achieve the rank of sergeant before training to be an officer and being deployed overseas in 1942. There, he served as a platoon commander for the Royal 22 Regiment and was part of the Allied Sicilian Campaign in southern Italy. This was an incredibly difficult and dangerous fighting exercise as the Germans slowly moved northwards and re-entrenched themselves repeatedly along the way.
There, he served as a platoon commander for the Royal 22 Regiment and was a part of the Allied Sicilian Campaign in southern Italy. This was incredibly difficult and dangerous fighting as the Germans slowly moved northwards and re-entrenched themselves repeatedly along the way.
During an assault on Mount Santa Maria, a particularly difficult battle, Lieutenant Colonel Robitaille was shot in the thigh, but he would not retreat backwards and moved on. As he led his troops forward and took the hill, he was shot a second time in the bicep and a third time in the chest before the battle was over. An arduous recovery ensued, but Lieutenant Colonel Robitaille had left an unforgettable mark on the war through his service. He and his late wife Anne lived together in Ottawa for decades after his military career was finished, and Lieutenant Colonel Robitaille served his community with the same level of commitment which he served his country. And now, as a resident of the Pearly Rito Veterans Health Centre, he continues to be a man who loves to help others.
His wife, Annie, and himself lived together in Ottawa for decades after his military career was finished, and Lieutenant Colonel Robitaille served his community with the same level of commitment with which he served his country. And now, as a resident of the Pearly Rito Veterans Health Centre, he continues to be a man who loves to help others.
The halls of Pearly Rito to pick up and deliver newspapers to rooms, push wheelchairs to and from the dining room and chapel for residents who are not able to, organize ongoing special activities for residents, act as a history reference for students who interview him about their class assignments, about military experiences, and escorts ministers and dignitaries to visit the centre. Lieutenant Colonel Robitaille, we are forever in debt for your service to our country and forever grateful that you chose to call Ottawa home and serve your community with such kindness. I'm thrilled that you could be with us here today, including your son Guy and his wife Linda, especially this close to Remembrance Day. On behalf of all the citizens of Ottawa, Lieutenant Colonel, thank you for your service to our country and to our community. Merci beaucoup.
I'm really pleased to see you at City Hall. It's a privilege to be honoured by the mayor, and so I thank you so very much. The 1939 war saw us mobilized. August attempt in 1939 when Mackenzie King asked for the mobilization of the Canadian young people at that time. I had a fundamental function. I would deliver bread on horseback in a Quebec City district. And that privilege was an honor. When my brother came to meet with me, he said, "Did you receive your conscription card? You're late. They want you to be in the Levy Regiment at 1:30." And I said, "It's already 1:30, and I haven't had breakfast." And so he said, "I have to go back home, change into my uniform to deliver bread to the Levy residents."
Bread delivery man, and I enjoyed joining the Canadian Army. The very first day of mobilization, I repeat the date, 26 August 39. Now came my second life. As his worshiper just said, I had been the privileged to go to the Van Dus, which was a place I wanted to be from the time I was six, seven years old, because my neighbor was a colonel of the militia, and I used to walk with him at lunch hour until he went home and have his soup. So Colonel Viens, his son was the big shot of the Senate at that time. In other words, it is a number life that we grew up with, and somehow, I was always happy to be in the military. I stayed until the very end because they were foolish enough after my nine months in hospital to keep me in. I don't know why. I think some said it's because you got the medal out of it. Your worship, I don't know what to say, because I have all these future leaders of Canada right here in there. So let's give them a hand. We are very proud of you. Keep your eyes open and know what goes on and participate in whatever activities your school profess for you. Thank you very much.
And I didn't mention Lieutenant Colonel is 92 years old and in great shape, and 93, 93, I apologize. I apologize, 93, not 92. Merci beaucoup, what an inspiration. Thank you very much, Lieutenant Colonel and members of your family. Merci beaucoup. I'd now ask the co-chairs, the honorary co-chairs of our United Way campaign, Conseiller Mathieu Fleury and councillor Mark Taylor, to give an update on our United Way campaign to date.
Just commenting on councillor Fleury's burgeoning moustache here for Movember. Good morning, everyone. Bonjour et tous. As the honorary co-chairs for this year's United Way campaign, councillor Fleury and I are here today to provide a mid-campaign update to you. As we noted at the kickoff, we are hoping to raise $500,000 in this year's campaign. That's a half a million dollars towards good work being done in our community. Currently, we're at the midway part in the campaign and we're at the 65% mark in our fundraising total. To reach our goal, though, we ask all employees to show their commitment to our community by donating through payroll deductions to help make measurable and lasting changes in our community. We want to remind you of our challenge that we posed to our fellow elected representatives and to your staff. In September, we challenged you to double our participation rates in the payroll deduction programme. We're aiming at 15%, and right now, we're at 8%. So we want to work together and make Ottawa the number-one community campaign in the city. So we need everybody to step up, and councillor Fleury and I will be around to harass all of you and your staff in the coming few days. For the third year in a row, the city of Ottawa has been chosen as one of Canada's top 100 employers. One of the factors that we were evaluated on was the employer's community involvement. Let's continue that recognition by supporting the United Way and improving the lives of our residents. You know, we look around our city, and the folks who benefit from the programs and services that the United Way provides could be our friends, they could be our relatives, they could be our neighbours. There is an amazing reach of United Way programming in this city, and it often affects and touches people that we may not realise are in need of help and in need of assistance. So you're not donating to a cause that is very, very far from home, you're donating to a cause that's very close to home. And as we heard in the mayor's remarks this morning, when there is such devastation around the entire world, there's no end of folks both far and near that can use our generosity. And we should be very thankful for the city that we live in and our ability to help and step up. So we want folks to set an example for your staff, for your coworkers, and become a friend of the campaign. Donate $20 a pay, or even better, you can become a leader by donating $40 per pay. Matt?
Thank you, Mark. As you know, donations are not just money, they are changes in our community, whether it's a donation that is related to a commitment or anything else. When a child succeeds in school, when you find a good job, when you find housing, as a community, we all benefit, and this is the larger community of Ottawa.
Donate $20, the price of a coffee, every day, not $20 a day, but $20 a pay, we could raise almost $850,000. Our goal is 500. We can do this. We've raised it from last year, but we're able to achieve it once again this year. It couldn't be any easier. So if you haven't already, please consider signing up for the regular payroll deductions. So your commitment lasts the entire year.
Show compassion by signing up for payroll deductions so that your donation will last all year.
An incentive available now for first-time donors. It's called First-Time Donors Super Credit. If you haven't claimed a charitable donation in the past five years, you get an extra 25% on your tax credit for charitable gifts.
This gives you an additional 25% credit if you haven't asked for this over the last five years.
Incentive, donations up to $200 receive 40% tax credit and donations. Between $200 and $201,000 receive 54% tax credit. Let me give you an example of plain numbers. If you give $150, it will cost you 71. If you give $1,000, it will cost you $322. This is a great savings for first-time donors and those who haven't claimed it in a while.
As you know, our organization includes 180 organizations.
Support our community, people that are in need in our community, and if we don't continue to support that, it would be a struggle for next year. We all benefit from that, our friends, family, and our colleagues do as well.
So please make your contribution, it's appreciated.
And I want to thank Mark and Matt for taking on this role, as well as Dan Chegnier, who also has a leadership role as the campaign chair. Merci beaucoup.
So thank you so much.
Just before roll call, we have a couple of colleagues who have approached me. I think councillor Harder would like to introduce some very special guests who are with us today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome all of you students from Cedarview. And let me ask you, where do you live? Yell it out.
Harlingen.
That should be a surprise to no one, since I'm your councillor. This is the grade, everyone, this is the grade five, six gifted class from Cedarview Middle School in Barhaven, and they have a full day on their agenda. They're going to walk up to Parliament Hill after they have a tour of City Hall. So thank you all for coming today, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your time.
It's great to have you here. Welcome to City Hall, and I hope you get a great tour. You can see a real Olympic gold medal just across the way there, a woman named Barbara Ann Scott. No, that's the press, they never get a gold medal, no. You're going to leave this room and go around. And then there's the Sports Hall of Fame, and also, I think you're going to go up and see my office. And you can sit in the mayor's chair if you want and feel that there's no power there. I'd also ask councillor Egli, I believe you had an announcement, and then councillor Wilkinson and Clark.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just want to invite my council colleagues to help out on a very worthwhile project in my ward. The City View Curling Club is currently in the running in the Aviva Community Challenge for $150,000 grant. For the next couple of weeks, people can vote online to support this, and the intent of the grant is to put towards the refurbishment and rebuilding of the club and to make it completely accessible for everybody. So you can go to www.avivacommitefund.org and log in and simply vote. You can vote every day for the next couple of weeks, and it would be greatly appreciated, and that money will be put to very good use if they win. Thank you very much.
Councillor Wilkinson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Most of you know that one of our former colleagues, Betty Hill, passed away last week. Betty and I worked together a lot in the 70s, when she's, I first knew her when she wrote The Richmond Rooster, which roasted everybody. And then she became, they're elected to the Richmond Council, because at those days, the small communities had their own councils, and when they were amalgamated, she became onto the Reeve of Guburn Township. Was there, I worked with her to form the city of Canada. And a lot of people don't know that the city, it was a minority government of the province, they were working on it, they agreed to it, but then they put a bill together with other things, went to cabinet, and they turned it down. And there was a week left before the summer recess. So I called Betty the Thursday morning, I said, "They turned it down at cabinet yesterday, what should we do?" She said, "Let's have a meeting tonight and figure out what to do." I phoned Andy Hayden, who was the Reeve of Napaian, because part of Napaian was coming into the new city. He said, "Nothing's going to happen, you girls look after it." And so we got together that night with some of the guys from our councils, nobody from Napaian came, and we decided the only way to get it was in a minority government, we had to get all three parties to agree. So we took on the three-party leaders, and by Monday, we had three party agreeing. On Tuesday, it was passed in the legislature. Wednesday, we had royal assent, and Friday, they, Andy got back from his cottage. But that was one of the types of things that was very typical of Betty. When she saw something that needed to get done, she didn't wave around and say, "It can't be done." She went and made sure it got done, and the two of us together, I think the province was afraid not to do it. But they, it was, I worked with her over many years. But they, it was, I worked with her over many years, and she even roasted me once, and I was really terrified when she was going to do that, but she actually was not too bad. So, I really miss having her, because she was one of these people that would always stick to the point, when she, something had to get done, she'd go right for it. She was feisty, she was difficult sometimes, we argued sometimes, but she was the kind of a woman that I think was so important in municipal government in this area, and I'd like us to recognize that. And Counselor Clark has had her on his regional, when she was a regional councillor, and he'd like to add a few words as well.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, you know, I would have thought The Richmond Rooster was named after her, except she's female. She was definitely, as Mary Anne says, an individual who saw what needed to be done and went after it. She was a great mayor of Guburn, and she was a great supporter of Guburn in any way, shape, or possible. You know, we talk about looking after our wards, well, Betty looked after her ward. And Betty was a good team player, too, despite that previous statement. She was part of a team that ran, I consider to be the most efficient government in the country, the regional municipality of Ottawa, Carleton. And it was because of people like Betty and the regional mayors, who brought their experience to the table and used it for the good of everybody. So, while Betty is going to be mourned by her grandchildren and family, there's a number of others of us that are around back in those days will still miss her.
Thank you, Counselor, and I had the honor of attending the funeral, as did Counselor Cadre and Counselor Wilkinson. And the city will be sending the family, the flag that flew at half-mast here at City Hall yesterday, so our thoughts and prayers are with Betty's family. Final announcement, I just wanted to let members of council and the public know that our own city manager, Kent Kirkpatrick, was awarded recently the Award of Excellence from Western University's Local Government Program Alumni Society. So, congratulations, well-deserved Kent Kirkpatrick.[749.12][749.12](applause) Madam Deputy Clerk?
Appel nominal, s'il vous plaît. Annette?
What's up?
Counselor Blowus?
Here.
Counselor Harder?
Here.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Present.
Counselor Alshen Thierry?
Present.
Counselor Cadre?
Present.
Counselor Taylor?
Here.
Counselor Shirelli?
Here.
Counselor Egli?
Here.
Counselor Deans?
Here.
Counselor Tierney?
Present.
Conseiller Fleury?
You see.
Counselor Clark?
Here.
Counselor Holmes?
Here.
Counselor Hobbs?
Here.
Counselor McCray?
Here.
Counselor Chernoshenko?
Present.
Counselor Hume?
Here.
Conseiller Blay?
Here.
Counselor Thompson?
Present.
Here.
Conseiller Duroche?
Here.
Counselor Hubley?
Here.
Herr Watson?
Present.
Le Coram et ten, Monsieur le maire?
Merci.
You have quorum.
Process verbe. October, carried. Declarations of interest, including those originally rising from prior meetings, declaration de conflit d'intérêt? None. Communications as presented. Regrets? No regrets filed to date. Motion to introduce reports, motion pourtant présentation de rapport, Conseiller Blay et Hubley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that the report from the Integrity Commissioner entitled Integrity Commissioner 2013 Annual Report, Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee Report thirty-six, Community and Protective Services Report twenty-seven A, Finance and Economic Development Committee Reports thirty-eight and thirty-eight A in camera, Planning Committee Report fifty-eight A, and Transportation Committee Report thirty-two be received and considered, and that the rules of procedure be suspended to receive and consider Planning Committee Reports sixty because of the urgency of the item contained in the report, with the specific reasons set out below.
Carried, adopté. Item number one, Integrity Commissioner will, we have a brief presentation, so we'll come back to that one. Committee Reports, Rapport de Committee, Agriculture and Rural Affairs, Rapport Numéro Trentise, OMB Appeal Subdivision and Zoning, six-three-three-five and six-three-five-oh Per Street.
Carried.
Carried. Item number three, Support for Feed and Tariff Program, appui de demande liée au programme de tarifs de rachète garantée pour les projets d'installation solaire au sol. Carried. Item number four, Noise Bylaw Exemptions, Construction Exemptions, there's some motions, so we'll, amendments, we'll come back to that. Item number five, Processe d'approvisionnement pour l'engadissement de la galerie d'art d'Atoua. Carried.
Spension of the Ottawa Art Gallery?
Friends from the arts community who are here. Analyzing the city's approach to business case developments. Item number seven, Collective Bargaining Mandates, QP five-oh-three and CIPP in camera. Does anyone wish to go in camera? On the report from Fedco? Carried, adopté. Planning Committee Report number sixty, Rapport Numéro soixante du Committee de Comprehensive zoning bylaw two thousand eight dash two fifty, anomalies and minor corrections, fourth report twenty thirteen, Quatrième Rapport deux-mille-treize. Carried. Does anyone wish to have anything taken from the bulk agenda, consent agenda? On the bulk consent agenda as presented? Carried. So, we'll go back and we invite Monsieur Robert Marlowe, qui est le Commissaire de l'Integrité...
Who's the Integrity Commissioner?
Monsieur Marlowe, bienvenue, welcome, and thank you for your service over the last year, and the floor is yours.
Merci beaucoup, Monsieur le maire.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, council members. As and by introducing my first report, I searched for inspiration with Aristotle, who said back then, "Freedom is obedience to the law that we prescribe to ourselves."
Saying that freedom is obedience to self-formulated rules. And I chose that quote particularly to point to the wisdom of the Ottawa City's council, its decision to proactively develop an accountability framework. It's been just over a year since I was appointed as the IC for the city. While significant progress has been accomplished in this past year alone, it's worth remembering that Ottawa City Council has embraced a significant amount of change overall since it first endorsed the accountability framework at the beginning of this term council on December eighth, two thousand and ten. Members of city council began with voluntary monthly disclosure of their individual office expenses in January two thousand and eleven. By July two thousand and twelve, city council approved a lobbyist registry and the establishment of the Integrity Commissioner's position. Two months later, city council launched the lobby registry and appointed the Integrity Commissioner. A year later, on July first, two thousand and thirteen, a code of conduct for members of council, an expense policy, and a community fundraising and special events policy were enacted, followed by the first proactive disclosure of gifts and tickets received by members of council at the beginning of October two thousand and three. Meetings and exchanges with my colleagues at all levels of government have reinforced that the City of Ottawa accountability framework is unique in several aspects. First and foremost, city council has not only elected to proactively invoke the discretionary integrity tools provided for in the Municipal Act of two thousand and one, it has done so, unlike other jurisdictions, in the absence of scandal. This has allowed council to adapt the integrity mechanisms such as they reflect and complement the existing political culture of the City of Ottawa. In addition, Ottawa is the first municipality in Ontario to integrate the three roles of integrity officials provided for in the Municipal Act two thousand and one. Merging the three roles of Integrity Commissioner, lobbyist registrar, and meetings investigator made sense for the City of Ottawa, both as a fiscally responsible option and particularly because the three roles support the ethical framework of individual members of council and council as a whole. Though there remains some skepticism in the field that this model is both sustainable and beneficial, I have observed the recent shift whereby the Ottawa model is seen as a good balance of cost-effectiveness and a strong commitment to accountability and transparency. Pardon.
Further, the City of Ottawa is the second Canadian municipality to have an official lobbyist registry, and the first one to do it voluntarily. This was done in record time and with available resources. Finally, city council subscribed to the transparency principles. Not only each member discloses proactively his office expenses monthly, but also lists all gifts received every quarter. This is, this proactive disclosure measure taken earlier this year, although not under the competence of the Integrity Commissioner, confirms that transparency is taking solid roots in the City of Ottawa.
Such important change transformations with such rigor and steadfastness, and while avoiding turmoil and internal strife. The various aspects of the council's accountability framework can be linked to one main underlying principle, one which I've evoked before and will invoke again, and is the word respect. Respect for the influence elected officials possess, respect for the institution, respect for colleagues, respect for the public, and respect for the fiduciary responsibility that comes with elected office. I'd like to acknowledge the enthusiasm of the staff of the Office of the Clerk and Solicitor. They are few, but their commitment to supporting city council's accountability framework is enormous. Their dedication to public service and support of stakeholders, lobbyists, members of council, and the Integrity Commissioner is commendable. I would also like to thank members of council for their generous time that they offered me during the various consultations that I held with them. You've been available in a timely fashion, and I value your input.
J'attends donc avec impatience, Monsieur le maire, de... So, I'm looking forward to pursuing over the year the work that has been started to increase transparency and public trust in the City of Ottawa. I thank you, and if you have any questions, please, I would be pleased to answer them. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Marlowe. Is there any questions?
...Commissioner on his report. That council receive the attached report for information? Carried. Merci, thank you.
Merci beaucoup.
Our next item is Noise Bylaw Exemptions, Construction, exemption de disposition de règlements sur le bruit, construction. Counselor Taylor and Fleury have two motions. Counselor Taylor, if you'd like to introduce your motion, and then we'll ask Counselor Fleury to introduce his motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and my motion essentially just seeks to clean up and clarify a little bit of what committee had passed. It doesn't substantially change it, it really just reflects some of the additional discussion that we had at committee that wasn't really carried forward in the amended committee recommendations. So, the motion and a memo have been circulated in advance and provided in the procedure memo, so I will, I will just jump to the therefore be it resolved, that recommendation one of the report be amended, to remove reference to third-party non-city construction projects, and that Document One drafting instructions of the above-noted report be deleted, and the attached Document One revised drafting instructions be substituted in its place. Essentially, all we're doing here is removing the exemption that was proposed by staff for private projects, for third-party projects. So, this motion and this report will only apply to city-initiated construction projects. And it does, it does carry forward the committee's recommendation that councillors will still have the opportunity to veto a noise exemption. There is a mechanism within the report that would allow the affected department to bring a report to the relevant committee in the face of that veto by the affected councillors if they couldn't resolve their differences. This does not affect the existing noise bylaw exemption process for non-city construction-related activities, so festivals, fairs, street parties, all of that remains the same as it is today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Merci, and we have, if we could ask Counselor Fleury to introduce, I believe it's, oh, I'm sorry, it's your motion, the second one as well. Oh, no, sorry, it's Counselor Fleury. Yep, do you want to introduce that, so we have them both on the table, and if anyone else has any other motion?
Would you like me to read the whereas, or can I just explain?
If we put it up on the screen, which it is, maybe explain and go to the therefore be it resolved.
So, as you know, the Rito Center is expanding, and there's been some issues related to noise, but we wanted to make sure that it was put into context. Right now, they're moving south on the property, southeast of the property where the old Sears business was. They have to use some outside work, and as you know, we have a transitway that runs along the lane on Mackenzie Avenue. So, the whereas, therefore be it resolved, read as, "The following waiver that noise bylaw two thousand four two-five-three be granted from December first, two thousand thirteen, to February twenty-eight, two thousand and fifteen, in relations to the construction work required along Mackenzie King Avenue for the redevelopment of the Rito Center in order to permit construction, vehicular, and related noises." And then there's a couple of sections, so A, section one, seven, seven, eight, fifteen, and fifteen-two be waived during the hours of eight PM to six AM of the next day, from Monday to Sunday. That any contractor wishing to work during the Friday or Saturday night is required to provide prior notices as stipulated by the Ward Council. That any noise generated by the construction or related to work for this project not exceed the level of ninety dBa at the point of reception. That the Chief of Bylaw and Regulatory Services be authorized to terminate the exemption with notice to the Ward Council based on complaints received and on review of compliance by the contractor with the terms of condition of the exemption, the noise bylaw, and any other relevant considerations related to public health and safety to the public, and that the project proponent, including Cadillac Fairview Corporation Limited, and the contractor be required to meet on a quarterly basis with the Ward Council and the Chief Bylaw and Regulatory Service official in order to review compliance with the requirements of this exemption and the bylaw.
Okay, merci. We have Counselor Shirelli, questions and comments?
Thank you, Your Worship. I just wanted to say that this is a much improved, with these two motions, this is a much improved approach to this, and I think it safeguards residents' concerns around noise during construction. And for the second one dealing with Rito Center, Counselor Taylor's reminded me that if you want to go to the largest indoor parking structure in Ottawa, it's right in the Pianet Bay Shore.
Okay. Thank you.[1666.12][1666.12](laughing) Okay, so on, we'll start with Counselor Taylor's amendment. Carried. Counselor Fleury's motion. Carried. On the main report is amended. Carried. Thank you. Motion to adopt reports, motion pourtant adoption de rapport, Counselor Blay and Hubley, please.
That the report from the Integrity Commissioner entitled Integrity Commissioner 2013 Annual Report, Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee Report thirty-six, Community and Protective Services Committee Report twenty-seven A, Finance and Economic Development Committee Report thirty-eight and thirty-eight A in camera, Planning Committee Reports fifty-eight A and sixty, and Transportation Committee Report thirty-two be received and adopted as amended.
Carried, adopté. Motions of which notice have been previously given, motion dont avait été donné entièrement. Counselor Holmes, I'll call on you, I believe you're going to withdraw this motion, and you have some comments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Regarding the motion before us, further to my tabling of this notice of motion at council two weeks ago, I've now received an update on the matter and understand that the sidewalk repairs are being done as we speak, and the work looks great on Gloucester Street, on Napan. And the work is being undertaken by the building owner, and they, along with the city and Claridge, will meet to mediate the issue of who will be paying for those repairs, estimated to cost approximately thirty-six thousand dollars. As such, I'm seeking the will of council to withdraw this motion at this point of time. However, in the event that this matter is not resolved by the parties, I intend to bring this motion back to council for your consideration. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
With the concurrence of council? Agreed? Agreed, thank you. Motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure? Are there any motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure? Notices of motion for consideration at subsequent meeting, Counselor Moffett?
has been circulated by residents of North Gore who are concerned about the potential effects of a proposed wind power generation project in their community, and who are declaring North Gore is not a willing host to the power project, and whereas the residents have presented their petition to Ottawa City Council, and whereas the decisions with respect to where wind farms are currently located are solely within the jurisdiction of the province of Ontario, and municipalities should have a substantive and meaningful role in citing wind power projects, and whereas the current lack of municipal dialogue and authority in this area has resulted in over 70 municipalities declaring themselves to be not a willing host for wind power projects, and whereas the municipal governments have a responsibility for local planning matters, and citing of wind power projects has local planning implications, and whereas the City of Ottawa believes that decisions with respect to renewable energy projects need to take place within the context of community sustainability, within the framework of Ottawa's official plan, and with the input of residents, neighborhoods, and communities, therefore be it resolved that the City Council ask the province of Ontario to make necessary legislative and/or regulatory changes to provide municipalities with substantive and meaningful role in citing wind power projects.
Okay, so that's notice of motion. It's a notice of motion, so it'll be dealt with at the next council meeting. All right, well, I'll ask the mover of the motion and the seconder if they're in agreement.
I mean, the intent was to just have notice of motion. I know the petition's coming forward two weeks.
I think the council wanted it to coincide with the petition, which is coming at the next council meeting.
Honestly, if council wants to waive the rules to do it, I'm fine either way.
Is there willingness to waive the rules?
Yes.
Yays and nays on waiving the rules?
Counselor Blowis?
Yes.
Counselor Darasch?
No.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Consulier Fleury?
No.
Counselor Moffett?
Yes.
Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Yes.
Counselor McCrory?
Yes.
Counselor Deans?
Yes.
Counselor Alshantiiri?
Yes.
Counselor Agloy?
Yes.
Counselor Hubley?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Yes.
Counselor Chernachenko?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Shirelli?
Yes.
Counselor Hobbs?
Yes.
Counselor Clark?
No.
Counselor Cadri?
Yes.
Consulier Bellet?
No.
Counselor Holmes?
No.
Consulier Minette?
Wait.
Counselor Tierney?
Yes.
Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Nineteen yays, five nays.
That's carried, okay. So Counselor Moffett, would you like to speak further to the motion?
Yeah, I mean, I think the motion is self-explanatory. It's, the community in North Gore has been putting forward a, has been preparing a petition. The petition was submitted to the Clerk's office yesterday. It's going to be on the agenda at the next council meeting. It has 1,228 signatures on it, and to put that in perspective, former Counselor Brooks and I combined for 1,300 votes in North Gore alone, so you can see the significance of that number. Pardon me?
Who got most?
I won't say who got the most, but that's besides the point. So this is, there's been a project proposed in North Gore for some time. One of the challenges has always been that we don't have a role in the process. I've met with Minister Shirelli recently, yesterday in fact, to discuss this. He supports what we're trying to achieve here in terms of the resolution, and I expect a new process in the near future as a result of this that will give us the ability to actually have some sort of a role, and gives the community a role too, whereas right now they unfortunately don't have one, and clearly that's what they're looking for.
Thank you, Counselor, and I want to thank the Counselor very much for the work that he's done with this, and Counselor Hubley over the course of the last couple of weeks, and reaching out to a number of different groups, including Minister Shirelli, so I appreciate your role. Counselor Chernachenko, please.
Thank you. I just want to speak briefly to this. I know this is a very difficult file and a divisive issue. I'd want to praise Counselor Moffett for taking, putting all this work in. It is something that's going to affect all of us. As many of you will know, I've been involved in the renewable energy industry and sort of education around renewable energy for a number of years, and there's a lot of hyperbole, a lot of information, misinformation, a lot of people wondering, how good is it, how bad is it? What I see before us has sort of taken us out of that. We're not debating the merits here and now. What we are saying is that an affected municipality, an affected neighborhood should have more of a say in where the citing of a project of this scale and potential impact is going to be, and I think this offers the opportunity now for people to make a real decision about what's going to affect them, in the same way that we expect it on any of our more urban projects, so that in the end, if a community knows exactly what they're facing, takes a vote that they are going to put the turbines in, it was their vote to not oppose it, or at least the majority voted, as opposed to feeling as it is now, that it's been imposed on them from top down. And as much as I'm an advocate of wind energy in the right places, on the right scale, on the right distance from where people live, and as much as I am troubled by a lot of the anti-wind hyperbole, I've always felt that people need a say and they need to have that discussion, and legislation that prevents them from having that discussion is not healthy in any way. So that's enough of what I want to say on this subject. Thanks for doing this, and I think this is a good step forward.
Great, that's very thoughtful comments, Counselor. Thank you. On the motion as presented, carried, adopté, merci. The next is a notice of motion, but if it's the will of council, the seconder and I are quite happy to have it dealt with. Now it's with respect to change the criminal code affecting assaults on bus drivers. Carried. So I'll just, on the suspension, I'll just read the motion for members of the public to hear, "Whereas women and men driving OC Transport vehicles provide a valuable service to more than 180,000 residents of Ottawa every working day, and whereas the residents of Ottawa value and respect the efforts of OC Transport employees as they provide this service, and whereas there is a national or local concern with the rising number of driver assaults occurring on public transit, and whereas the Canadian Urban Transit Association has reported that in 2011, the number of assaults across Canada reached 2,061, and whereas OC Transport has recorded 59 incidents of violence against drivers in 2012 alone, whereas on September 27, the City of Ottawa's Transit Commission communicated support for Bill C402, an act to amend the criminal code, public transportation workers, a private members bill in the House of Commons introduced in February 2012 and reinstated on October 16, 2013, and whereas Bill C533, an act to amend the criminal code protecting public transportation workers, is a private members bill introduced in the Parliament of Canada on June 12, 2013 and also reinstated on October 16, 2013, and whereas legislation is also designed to stiffen criminal code penalties for anyone convicted of assaulting transit operators and therefore act as a deterrent to such attacks, whereas all members of the public transit industry, union, and management alike recognize the need to protect transit workers, and the amalgamated Transit Union Local 279 has expressed strong support for Bill C533, therefore be it resolved that City Council communicated support for both C533 and C402 to the Prime Minister, the Attorney General, the leaders of the opposition, the sponsors of the bills, the Honorable Ralph Good, LMP, Wascana, and Peter Julian, MP, Burnaby, New Westminster, and all Ottawa members of parliament, so as to encourage speedy passage of legislation. So this is an issue I know that in discussions that the ATU and our, the two local members or the two members of parliament I referred to, they've had some productive discussions with the new Justice Minister, Peter McKay, and I'm certainly optimistic that the government will look at this issue very seriously for the benefit and protection of those men and women who go to work each and every day and should not fear being assaulted on the job just for doing their job. So I'd ask council for their support so that we can send our strong indication of our support for nonviolence in the workplace as well as support for our drivers. Counselor Deans?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add a couple of comments to your comments. The Transit Commission dealt with a very similar motion back on September 27, 2012. That was unanimous. I'm hopeful that this council will pass this motion unanimously today, and I'm especially hopeful that the Parliament of Canada will recognize the significance of this motion and the need to move with this. There was a recent high-profile case where the perpetrator of the crime got a suspended sentence, and the transit operator is still suffering the injuries that were sustained. In 2012, we had 59 transit operators in Ottawa who were assaulted on the job. OC Transport takes the safety and security of our employees and our customers very seriously, and certainly assaults on transit operators jeopardize the safety of our customers as well. So this is very important. We take it seriously. ATU has been, 279 has been working very hard on this issue, and I think a clear and unequivocal message has to go to people in this community that assaults on transit operators will not be tolerated, and that's why this bill in parliament is passed. That's the message it will send. It will be a deterrent for people assaulting our drivers, and I think that's clearly in our interest, so I would ask for your support today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. On the motion as presented, carried. Thank you very much. Are there any other notices of motion for consideration at a subsequent meeting? Notice of intent from the City Auditor General, avis de l'intention des vérificateurs de la ville. Notice of intent from the City Auditor General to table at the 28th of November 2013 meeting of the audit subcommittee the following report, Office of the Auditor General 2012 Annual Report and detailed audit reports. Motion to introduce bylaws, motion important presentation de règlement, conseiller Blay et Hubley, s'il vous plaît.
That the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, three readings be read and passed.
Confirmation bylaw, règlement de ratification, conseiller Blay et Hubley, s'il vous plaît.
That the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of November 13, 2013.
Inquiries, Counselor Deans. As an inquiry, anyone else have a written inquiry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On June 25, 2010, the City of Ottawa entered into a memorandum of understanding for the construction of the municipal exhibition hall facility, the Ernst &amp; Young Centre. In the agreement, both the City of Ottawa and Shankman, the centre operator, made equity contributions of eight and a half million dollars. Since the Ernst &amp; Young Centre opening, the surrounding community has contacted bylaw with complaints regarding both traffic and noise from events held at the centre. More recently, on October 25, 2013, noise bylaw complaints were called into 311 regarding an event at the Ernst &amp; Young Centre. On October 30, 2013, Scream presented by DNA at the centre resulted in multiple noise bylaw complaints, approximately 20, from as far away as the Emerald Woods community. In follow-up discussions with city staff, there were a variety of concerns expressed by other city departments, including OC Transport, the Ottawa Police Service, the Ottawa Paramedic Service, and Event Central regarding the operation of a previous event at the centre. In light of ongoing community complaints regarding the operation of the Ernst &amp; Young Centre, I ask that the city manager take the lead to meet with the operators of the Ernst &amp; Young Centre, along with the Ward Counselor and the City of Ottawa representatives from bylaw, the Ottawa Police Service, OC Transport, Ottawa Public Health, the Ottawa Paramedic Service, and the Ottawa Fire Service, and Event Central in an attempt to resolve ongoing issues that disturb the surrounding community.
Okay, so that's inquiry and direction, I think at the same time, to the city manager. Adjournment, Counselor Blay?
That the proceedings of the city council meeting of the 13th of November 2013 be adjourned.
Thank you.[1550.41]